Good evening and welcome to the November 13th, 2018 Gilderlin Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phone and stand for the pledge?
First on the agenda tonight is a showcase of students.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Mr. Michael Piscatelli to the podium to introduce some students who had an extraordinary experience at the Board of Regents last week talking about our Sources of Strength program. So, Mr. Piscatelli, why don't you introduce the students and get us started?
Okay. So, to my left, I've got Afton Service, and then I've got Ava Rose Scavio, and then Raven Lacy. As many of you are aware, we started the Sources of Strength program a couple of years ago, and it's really started off as a suicide prevention program. But, over the years, it has turned into so much more, including that it is our primary instrument for affecting school climate now in the building, mainly because of the involvement of students like these up here right now. About a couple of weeks ago, the organizers, or the people who run the Sources of Strength program, were invited to do a presentation to the Board of Regents, and they reached out to Gilderlin to offer some student representatives because we are one of the most active and successful chapters of their organization. So, these guys got the opportunity to sit in front of the Board of Regents and to answer questions and share their experiences. So, I'll let them speak to what they did.
Hi, again, my name is Afton Service. I'm the co-treasurer for Sources of Strength with Ava Rose Scavio. And Sources of Strength, to me, is more than just suicide prevention. It's a place for our school community to come together. Students are selected by peers and teachers to be a part of the group, and during our meetings, we take part in team-building activities, and we have the opportunity to learn about ways in which we can have a positive impact on our peers. So, all of the students in Sources of Strength are peer leaders. Their job is to be aware of their surroundings during their daily school activities and to notice if someone seems like they could use something to talk to, or even a friendly smile if they're having a bad day. So, November is Sources of Strength Month of Generosity, which falls perfectly in line with Thanksgiving. So, this month, we have been collecting canned food in every homeroom for our annual food drive. So, we had the opportunity to go visit the Board of Regents, and we were just, we were so happy to be there, and just, we were represented very well, and we're just really happy to sit around there.
Hi, my name is Ava Rose Scavio. I am a junior and co-treasurer along with Afton Service, and I've been in this club since I was a freshman. I was like the first round of kids, and we've, 30, 40 kids maybe was the first training, and we've grown to 175, so it was just awesome to see us grow. So, one thing that I want to talk about that was pretty big was we're planning a suicide prevention walk in May, and we're going to do 22 laps around our school's track because a person takes their life every 22 minutes. So, we thought that'd be an awesome way to honor that person. And my favorite thing about SOS is that we give support before it's lost. Like, the school is just, it's mostly about unity and just keeping us connected before it's lost, because people who are depressed or have suicidal thoughts feel like they don't have anyone, so we're trying to provide it to those kids before they lose it.
Hi, everyone, I'm Raven Lacy. So, with Sources of Strength, like, for me, we have a family outside of here, but this is our family here as well, and that's how I look at Sources of Strength. So, with the smiles and the friendly gestures, it's like us all bonding and coming together, which is like a great part, because that helps with also like school spirit. And that's also what Sources of Strength is about. It's not just about suicide, but that's the main point, but we also like to target other things, because we don't want to look at just the bad side of things. We want to bring the light out of the bad things. So, the freshman me wouldn't have been up here, and that's how Sources of Strength helped me. It helped me to realize that, like, there's greater things in life, and to smile more, and to just make new friends and meet new people, and it's just a great thing. So, yeah.
That's my experience.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Did any of the Regents ask you any questions about your program, or did you just have to make a presentation?
You just had to make a presentation, sorry.
We made a presentation. It was like, they asked us questions, but we didn't necessarily get to answer them. Yeah, it was kind of weird.
Now, why was that?
I have no idea. It was just like, there were so many things going on, like, one, like, they'll ask a question, and then someone will chime in about something else, and they'll just like throwing off topic just a little bit, so it was kind of hard for us to like actually get in there, you know?
Very good. Well, thank you so much for doing that.
Does anyone else have questions? Well, thank you very much for representing this school and sharing your experience.
Great job, ladies.
Next on the agenda, high school student representative.
Is a representative here?
I'm back. Okay. So, in our school, um, well, I want to start off with the bad thing first, just to get out of the way. So, the first week of November, there was like seven bus accidents around, in one week. So, student government is working on trying to recognize that in a way. We're not sure of how to do it yet, but we're working on that as well. On the 26th, we had a blood drive, and this is our 10th annual toy drive that we're having. And we're also doing a HAD drive, which is with Sources of Strength, for kids with cancer, as well as a food drive, which ends this Friday. And that's also a homeroom competition, so whoever gets the most food gets a breakfast. Um, we're helping Farnsworth Middle School with their code drive as well. November 5th, the International Club had a flying colors fundraiser, which took place outside on the field. Basketball fundraiser is in the process with student government. This would be maybe like our second year doing that. We're not sure of what, if we want to do basketball, because it's kind of like, we can't do a contact sport, because it's what, we want to do it with students and teachers, so we have to like re-figure that out, and we're in the process of doing that. The Class of 2019 is hosting their Hoffman Car Wash from the 5th to the 18th, and the Gilderlin Perro came out, and we just sent out, well, we just finished the hats that we've resent out, and soon Sources of Strength will be getting their hoodies apparel, which will be coming out soon. Um, new order for hats and stuff, got that. Winter sports have just begun, so everyone's busy now, and so the quarter ends, the quarter ended Friday, so grades will be coming out soon, so everyone's looking forward to those. The 14th, which is tomorrow, the school starts their college search program, and sophomores have just signed up for their pre-ACTs, which will be this weekend. SOS is planning their second annual banquet, as long with the walk, as Ava Rose stated. And from the 16th to the 25th, the music department is selling fruit as a fundraiser for money. And the last thing is Class of 2020 has been talking about prom, and we have so much money that, that's left over as of right now, that we're figuring out what we want to do with it, as far as giving it away to the Class of 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Barb. Could I ask Maria a question? She mentioned that the children couldn't play basketball with their teachers, and I know in the past, they've had dodgeball games with teachers and basketball games. Is there a reason why they can't do it anymore?
Because it's a contact sport. So, I'm not too clear on all of the rules, but I know that if there are rules, we will be following them.
When we did do like basketball, and like, um, the difference is that when we did it, we were in school and doing it as like together, but now we're making it a fundraiser, which we're raising money off of, so we can't do it like that. Like, we can't have raising money and then have teachers and students together, if that makes a little more sense.
But we've done that in the past, and like, we've had fundraisers in middle school with teachers and kids for different organizations, and...
I'm not sure. That's what my, the student government told me. They said that we have to rearrange, because it's a contact sport. I'm not sure of all the rules, though.
But it's in school, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe we can at least check.
We'll look into that, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Do you have a quick question?
Sure.
Go ahead, Tim.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard things correctly beginning. There was references to, oh, seven bus accidents, if I think, if I heard it right, and that involving students, cars, or vehicles with buses, or what exactly did that mean?
Nationwide.
Well, yeah, it is nationwide, but the reason I, I really wanted to bring it in school, because one of the accidents was by a 19-year-old. He ran over one of the kids, but the kid did survive, but that's just the point, like, we have a lot of students who drive to school, and we need to take like recognition, to like being safe and stuff.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering.
No, they were not all here.
No, they, none of them were here, actually.
Okay. Makes me feel better.
Right. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is budget development. Dr. Wiles?
So, just, I'll point out that we have a running collection of budgetary, budget commitments that we get from our community. So, just for your information, and beginning tonight, we have Mr. Neil Sanders, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, with our budget outlook for 2019-20.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Good evening. This is the first in a series of presentations that we'll be doing in upcoming board meetings. As we go through the budget development process, we'll be bringing along more information as it becomes available and sharing that as we go along. So, this is the first piece of information we have. We have very limited information at this point in time, but what we do have, we did want to share with you, gives us a little sense of what we're facing for the 2019-20 school year. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about enrollment. We do do projected enrollments in our school district, and they do correlate to staffing, so it's important to know how many students we have and will have in the coming year. So, as you can see from the chart, we currently have 4,807 students. We're projecting 4,891 next year. That's a change of an additional 84 students. And you can see the breakdown between K5, elementary, middle school, and high school. Most of the growth is projected to occur at the elementary level, looking at a slight decrease at the middle school level, and almost an offsetting increase again at the high school level. In terms of sections at the elementary level, we're looking at class size guidelines that we used. So, using those class size guidelines, we're looking at an overall reduction, K5 across all five elementary schools of one section, so that's equivalent to one teaching position of reduction. And also, in K1, we have teaching assistants, so there is a reduction at the K1 level that would result in a .5 FTE reduction purely based on the sections that are being projected at this point. So, overall, we're looking at a total of, as I said, 84 students, but that's a variance from our projection of 78 students. In terms of the numbers going forward, when we look at projecting enrollment, you can see that basically we are projecting to increase over the next 10 years or so. It varies a little bit, but they're in the upper 80s. We have some little bit lower in the middle years than 2021, 22, and 22, 23, and then it resumes at a higher pace going forward until we hit 2027, 28. This is graph showing by level the projection, projected enrollment, and working from the bottom up. The bottom is middle school in red, grade six through eight, so starting at 1,000, and that's looking to go up close to 1,400 over the next 10 years. High school is next, and they're looking to start at around 1,500 and climb up to 1750 or so. And then K5 is at the top, so they're about 2250, and they're going to slowly increase over time and end up about, within enrollment, about 2,500 students, again, based on current projections. I'd like to talk a little bit about revenues, and again, we don't know a lot at this point, but we do have some indicators of what's happening at the state level. If you look at New York State's financial plan first quarterly update, which was released in August of 2018, the state is projecting deficits over the next, over the current year and then in the following two years of 780 million, 1.4 billion, and 487 million. This report, they'll do another mid-year estimate, should be out any day now. We don't have that yet, so the only information we have is this first quarterly update, but it does get updated. The state continues to update that data throughout the course of the year. One of the revenue items for us is building aid, and we're projecting a reduction of That's not good until you think of what that represents, and building aid is tied to our debt, so when we have a reduction in building aid, that means we have a reduction in our debts. We're paying down debt, we're losing state aid, but you'll see on the next slide, we're also losing expense related to debt. In terms of the property tax growth factor, as you know, it's limited to 2%, or the Consumer Price Index, whichever is lower. And through September 2018, the CPI is 2.3%. The estimate from those groups that analyze this is that we will end up, at the end of December, with a tax cap growth estimate of 2%. So, it looks like the CPI is going to stay a little bit above 2%. That's the projection. Anything above 2% automatically goes to 2%, so we should be at 2% at the end of this, end of December. In terms of expenditures, as I mentioned before, we are looking at paying down some debt, so we have savings of $931,570. Again, we have about $565,000 in state aid we're losing on the revenue side, but we're losing more than that on the expenditure side. Terms of mandated retirement system contributions, can't fix the impact of that, but we do have some percentage of salary information from both retirement systems. So, the teacher's retirement system just came out in the last couple of days, and are projecting that the rate is going to drop from 10.62% of salaries in the current year to somewhere between 8.5 to 9.5% for next year, and they'll firm that up in January or February, so we'll have that information at that time. The employee's retirement percentage is currently 14.9%. We do get an estimate of that. Right now, it looks at it's going to be about 14.84%, so almost exactly where it is in the current year. So, just in sort of a timeline format, where are we? On October 23rd, we receive public input for our budget development. Coming up on December 4th, we'll have board direction for our budget development, and then in December and into January, all our administrators will be meeting with the district office team and developing and presenting budget requests for review. And as always, we welcome any opportunity to receive input from the community, and you may email your comments and feedback to superintendent@gilderlinschools.net. Is there any questions from the board? Ms. Judy?
The projection minus the actual enrollment this year, is that a significant 78, or is that a common, or whatever it was?
That was from the projection that we...
Right. I'm just wondering, it seems like that that's big. Is that common? I mean, is it usual?
Um, that's not unusual. It's not that large compared to the total enrollment of almost 5,000 students.
Right.
So, that's pretty close percentage-wise overall.
Okay. And that's spread all over the district, so you can't really, yeah, take...
The impact is mitigated, it should go across by elementary schools and middle school and high school.
Okay, thank you. Barb, do you have a question? Yeah. Again, this is something I just want to throw out to you, basically as public education. One of the things that you'll see coming up time after time on the budget surveys, or the voter surveys, is the fact that, well, your enrollment is less than it was back, you know, 10 years ago, but your budget is 20% higher or whatever. Can you explain, you know, about salaries and things such as that, and sort of share some information with the public?
Sure. So, enrollment is not, it's not a one, it doesn't have a one-to-one relationship with any other element of the budget. So, even though we may have declining enrollment, we still have other costs as part of the district that will continue to increase, and that may be related to staffing for salaries and benefits. But we also have facilities to maintain, which is really irrelevant of the number of students that we, that we have. Debt payments are not tied to student population, so there's a number of significant portions of the budget that aren't directly related to the number of students that we have. And it's also a function of how students are allocated across courses and sections, which can vary. It's not all based on pure numbers, it's really based on how those students are dispersed throughout the system as well.
You have another question, Barb? Other questions?
I have a question about the next slide here.
Sure, go ahead, Tim.
Okay, the next slide, which is that 10-year enrollment, I think it's the next one. It has, yes, that one, the chart. So, I was just curious, in some of, in those out years, the numbers get pretty interesting, where it goes from plus 101, and it drops significantly to plus 44, then it almost doubles again to plus 86. And, I mean, I know those are way out, but I was just kind of interested in the fluctuation there, what the reasoning might be.
Okay. Well, the premise beside, behind the projections is we use what's called the cohort survival method, and it's tried in true measure for projecting enrollments for school districts. And what it does is it looks at, well, we've captured 10 years' worth of data, but what attracts is the number of students in a grade level, how many of them advance in the following school year to the next highest grade level. So, K to 1, 1 to 2, 2 to 3, and so on and so forth. So, we get that ratio for each of those years. If the ratio is 1, it means exactly the same number of students that were, and we'll say in kindergarten, for example, there's 100 students in kindergarten, and then there's 100 students in first grade the following year, the ratio is 1. But if there's, for some reason, there's 95 students in the following year, the ratio is .95, and conversely, if it's higher, it could be 1.05 if we're five over. So, we capture those changes over time in terms of how many students in the previous year end up in the, in the grade the following year, and we can get a pattern of what our enrollment is doing over time. Then what we do is we look at those ratios over a period of either three, five, or seven years, and try to pick the ratio that best represents what's happening with that particular cohort by grade level. So, in some years, if we're looking at certain trends where we see those ratios either increasing or declining at a higher-than-average rate, we might use a three-year ratio, because it's more indicative of a current trend. Five-year tends to be a good average, because you have enough years to really see if there's ups and downs in how those fluctuations work out. That's what I tend to use most of the time. But you also have seven, which is a longer-term look at your data, and that can be indicative of, of, you know, if we have consistency over a long period of time, it's probably a pretty good indicator that that's a pretty stable trend. And then we apply those ratios going forward to project enrollments. So, it really depends on the ratio and the pattern of movement of students over time, gaining or losing in a particular year. So, that's why you see some of that variation, depending on the ratio and how many students are coming through the system at certain points in time, and then as we're projecting out 10 years, of course, it's harder and harder to make accurate predictions. So, it's really just a pattern piece, and I don't have a better, a concrete way to explain particular numbers, but that's basically how the structure works, and the numbers are yielded from actual data, and then those percent, the percentage of ratios from year to year over time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Neil.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is public comment. Two public comment, Lynn, did you have any more people sign up? We ask that each public comment be kept to three to five minutes. First, we have Jim Sifarelli.
As a parent of a student in the district, I can tell you that I want my child to go to a school where the roof doesn't leak, or that the pavement isn't crumbling. However, I'd like to share some of the reasons why I did not support this proposal. Your proposal asked for nearly 3/4 of a million dollars for security cameras, but didn't provide the breakdown on the estimate. You provided just four sentences to justify $733,000. Why so much for only 180 cameras? Nearly $300,000 for the floor tile replacement, but didn't describe the extent of the work. What percentage of the floor has issues? What percentage of the floor is to be replaced? How many square feet? You stated that you don't know if asbestos abatement is required, yet you included the abatement in the estimate. I could make further statements with respect to many more of the projects listed in the $43 million referendum, but allow me to explain my frustration with the current process. I attended your public presentation at the Gilderlin Library in early October, of which less than 20 people attended over both the morning and evening presentations. I asked Director of Facilities Cliff Noonie if he could provide any documentation that had the details to the projects. He answered no, and told me that the only write-up on the projects was the same high-level document you provided on your site, on your website. I asked Mr. Noonie about the estimates and what would happen to the taxpayers' money should any of the projects be completed for less than the described estimates. It was conveyed that the school district keeps that money. I asked where the estimates came from. Mr. Noonie told me that they came from one company, a company that will also bid on the same projects in the spring of 2019. I don't think it's in the best interests of the taxpayers to be pinned down to a dollar amount now, and only to have the bidding process occur half a year later. I would also like to describe what I thought was the biggest showstopper for me. In early October, I had an email exchange with our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Damian Singleton. Since the science and technology modernization paragraph used a total of four whole sentences to describe why you want to spend $4.3 million, I asked Dr. Singleton to go into further detail on your plans to spend what represents over 10% of the entire referendum. He described how we needed upgrades to align with the NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards, and went into further detail on how these standards describe a process where the students must communicate with each other, and the teacher, and how the students must formulate plans to solve a problem and act on those plans. I again asked for him to get to the brass tacks, as I did not connect how communication and teamwork in the classroom translated to spending $4.3 million. He wrote me that he was concerned for the safety of the children. I asked him, again, to go into further detail by describing the types of issues he had to deal with with respect to safety in the labs. Other than a student spilling chemicals on themselves, he told me he could not describe any issues that were the fault of the facility. Again, I asked for how $4.3 million was going to be spent. He replied, describing that they really don't know how they will set up the labs, and that they plan to work with architects and cycle back many times to come up with a final design. Why are you not looking at another recently updated school and copying their design? I question. You say you're doing this for the safety of the children, but your desire to place mobile furniture in the science labs could not be further from safe. Laboratory lairits are fixed, so that you know how to get to an eye-wash station when your eyes are closed. You should not have to stumble over, over mobile furniture during an emergency. This school district is taking the taxpayer for granted with your current process for estimates and your lack of details on cost breakdown. I believe in trust, but verify. Verification is not possible with this lack of transparency. Help us understand how the estimates were calculated, how the bidding process works, what happens to monies not spent. Please tell the taxpayers publicly and online before another referendum or budget vote is planned. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kim Blaziac.
I wrote it down. It's not as much as it seems, I just can't read. Gilderlin Community and Board of Education members, let me preface by saying that the statement I will be making is my own and not reflective of my views of New York State PTA, Gilderlin PTAs, or any organization or board I currently sit on. I was a member of the facilities committee, which submitted recommendations for the Capitol Project voted down in October. Admittedly, I've struggled with why this happened, and I've reached out to many people and had many people ask me why. Others keep asking why $42.7 million cannot be added into the regular school budget. One comment that continues to be said is "wish list." While some items could be construed as a wish list, I believe others are a necessity. Within the committee report, we recommended new fire alarm PA replacement, telephone system replacement, added security cameras and replac- system replacement, added security cameras and replacements, added security film to our windows, technology power backup, and emergency lighting upgrades. That one part was roughly about $5.9 or $6 million of the entire project. This may seem like a wish list, but they are sadly a true necessity to ensure our children feel safe in schools. As for adding these items to the budget, I invite everyone to please be a part of the process and get to understand how that may not always be possible. Better yet, advocate on behalf of the school to your elected officials for the foundation aid formula to be fixed and all funds distributed. We as adults are not in these schools every day. Some of us read reports, come to meetings, and try to keep up with the state of the district. Our children, the students, are here every day. They are the people we as a community should be speaking to and including on these conversations. To give credit, Gilderlin has been good at including students in the surveys. I think communities sometimes forget that school is much different than it used to be, and our kids are facing situ- excuse me, situations and issues we've never thankfully had to worry about. They, as well as employees, are in the schools every day. They have a different fear with 35 school shootings alone just in 2018. We owe it to our students and employees to do better. This past weekend, I was humbled to hear Alyssa Parker, mother of Emily Parker, a student killed in her first-grade classroom at Sandy Hook Elementary. Alyssa told us about how she and her husband chose Sandy Hook because it was in a great community, was a high-ranking school, had high test scores, and nothing ever happened. Nothing ever happened. She went through that painful day in grave detail. She told us about how the shooter shot 7 rounds of ammo through the front windows of the school and gained access within seconds, not minutes, seconds. Not the minutes that the wish list security glass would provide. She told us how, after he shot the principal and psychologist, he went to the first classroom and killed 2 students. When his gun jammed, the students did what they were taught to the week before, and went to the firehouse. No one knew they were coming like the week before when they held their drill. No one was there being a fire, a volunteer fire department, so the kids had to knock on doors to find help. He then went into the second classroom, and we all know the rest. She also told us about 1 male teacher in the building who was able to get out, but sadly was thought to be the second shooter because of the lack of communication within the school. One person who knew the plan was killed first. When asked, when, how, when asked the remaining staff and superintendent what the plan was for dismissal, they all responded they didn't know the person who knew the plan was killed, just take your kids home. One of the many things she said was that she, ah, she never thought it would happen in their school because it was a good school, and she kept saying they had high test scores. While Gilderlin does a good job on our security, we can and need to do better. We need to take simple measures to ensure our children, employees are safe. Do we invite first responders to our drills? Do many people know of the plans? And I'm not just talking like the community, I mean like within the buildings, does every single person know the plan in case, God forbid? Do we invite parents? And parents need to be part of these plans. Our neighborhood should be invited in and trained on what to do if we have such a horrifying emergency. These children wandered the street banging on doors to get help after they saw 2 of their classmates shot. In last year's budget survey, 61% overall wanted safe and secure buildings. Broken down, that was 64% of our students, 64% of parents, 52% of employees, and 51% of residents. Over half your student body who responded in that survey do not feel safe in school. This is not acceptable. This makes these children unable to learn at their full potential. My own child has told me that when a book drops in class, it's no longer just a book dropping in class, it's that split second to figure out what it is. During the budget season and the next Capital Project vote, please keep these safety items in mind. As for now, I suggest we all work together to ensure the continued safety of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaziac. Next on our agenda, we're gonna try again to, um, have board issues, ideas, and sharing in this part of the agenda instead of the end, so we'll see how that goes. Does anybody have anything to share?
Oh, just the high school play. I think that was last weekend, and it was excellent, of course. Congratulations to those students, it was a very well-done, entertaining evening. And I see we're all invited to the, uh, focus luncheon, and I haven't responded yet, and I hope they'll still let us respond, because that's always a wonderful, wonderful opportunity.
I'm sure you can come.
Okay. I would like to go, I just forgot to respond, so.
Anyone else? Teresa?
I was the representative, or I am the representative at the Westmere PTA, and one of the things that was brought up, um, yet again, was due to communication. We need to do better at communicating. Issues are brought up to the board and the superintendent in email, we need to be able to, I'm just gonna reiterate it, because I know I've said it many a times. This protocol that we have, I don't know if it's really being used appropriately, because I'm still hearing that things are not being addressed as previously and currently. So I just wanted to make that comment known, that was mentioned to me at one of the, the PTA meeting that I went to.
Does anyone here in Communications Committee, I'm just wondering if like, they can look at, Ben, you are, I don't know if we've ever discussed that, we, we discuss it as a board, but I don't know if the Communications Committee could start with, you know, the actual procedure of how we respond. I know Christine's been responding on behalf of the board for the most part, and then sometimes we get emails in the middle of something that's already happened, so we all don't respond to those, um, but I don't know if you can bring that back, Ben, to the committee?
Yeah, uh, you know, there is a protocol, um, but as, as we're discovering, the protocol doesn't cover everything. So, you know, uh, we recently had an issue where the board was CC'd on something, and we didn't, the protocol didn't account for that. So, um, like every policy we have, it, it needs to continue to evolve and grow, and I appreciate the continued comments, uh, from the community to, you know, keep us, uh, working on that.
Thanks, Teresa. Barb, did you have something? Tim, did you have anything?
Uh, no.
Sorry, I didn't know if you could hear me.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, we have minutes from the October 23rd meeting, CPSC, CSC recommendations, personnel action, textbooks, and financials. Oh, Barb?
I'll make a motion to put the consent items, but I also want to make a correction to the minutes.
Sure.
Whatever that's appropriate.
You can do that now, I think.
Well, I'll second it.
Oh, you need to second it? Okay. Ben, second it, thank you.
In the minutes, it says, Mrs. Fratiglio apologized to Erica Smith for the district taking more than 60 days to get back to her with a decision on services for her son. And I'd just like to read into the minutes, and you can, whoever could summarize it better, but what I actually said is, "If indeed it took more than the 60 days to process the request, I just hope we could do better, because every day for a handicapped child is important. If a service is needed, it just breaks my heart that you have to wait for 60 days, 90 days, 180 days, because every day is a lost day. I would just hope we could do better if indeed that was the case." If you read the sentence as it is, it would appear that I was saying it was the case, and instead, my statements were just saying, can we look into it and see if, if that was the case? So if we could, in some way...
Update the minutes?
Yeah.
Do you have that?
I'd like to do that.
Okay. Uh, any other questions?
Did we have to add something now to consent?
After you bow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes, sorry, 6-0.
So before we move on, I just like to take this opportunity, uh, in that last motion, we just hired our new Food Service Director, uh, Megan Beck, who is here in the audience with us, so we'd like to give Megan a nice Gilderlin welcome, so glad you're here.
Welcome. So we're moving on to information items. First up, curriculum instruction. Dr. Singleton?
Thank you very much. I'll start with a little bit of tech integration, uh, update for you. You'll see some pictures with your materials of students utilizing the Chromebooks in Kyle Green's High School art class. You'll notice that the students are using a stylus, which coupled with the Tableau feature of the Chromebook and an app called the Adobe Illustrator Draw, our, our students are, and, well, it's enabled our teachers and our students to integrate technology for digital self-portrait painting, which are shown there, and many other art activities as well. And next, I'm pleased to announce that we had some essay contest winners. We want to extend congratulations to 2 Gilderlin High School 10th graders, Burhan Bula and Carolyn Burns. They won second and third prize at $50 and $25 respectively for their essays on Columbus Day, and this was sponsored by the Sons of Italy, so congratulations to both students. And just a little professional development update, this is from Farnsworth Middle School, where they have initiated a process called a collegial inquiry session that they've had in place for several years now, and this is really an attempt to embed professional development conversations on a regularly scheduled basis. Uh, recently, they've had a couple of examples that I just wanted to share with you quickly, and they are providing simple directions for student success, differentiation strategies for student success, and then the impact of poverty on learning, and what we, what can we do about it. And this is a great opportunity for our teachers and our administrators to come together to discuss some of these, these pressing topics. And we also had 20 Gilderlin students who have been selected to the Area All-State Music Festival. And this is to be held on November 16th and 17th at the Saratoga Springs High School, and these outstanding ensembles consist of students chosen from a 9-county area, including Albany, Fulton, Hamilton, Montgomery, Rensler, Saratoga, Schenectady, Warren, and Washington Counties. Competitive selection to these groups is based upon the score received by the students during their previous spring at the NSMA Solo Evaluation Festival. Playing in the concert band under the direction of Mr. Andrew Pease will be William Guo on alto sax, Elizabeth Novak on bassoon, Aiden Fusco, and Alex Jambanfan on trumpets, um, Iram Dufry, Glenn Treschel, and Marie Collison on French horn, and Richard Walser on trombone. Playing in the orchestra under the direction of Mr. James Tapia will be Joanna Chen on cello, Shreyas Srinivasan and Amy Zhang on violin. Singing in the chorus under the direction of Mrs. Erica Washburn will be Anna Capuano, Renee, uh, Rena Cunningham, excuse me, Sean Donnelly, Colin Ingram, uh, Sir Rob Kumar, Riley Olina, and Victoria Smith, chosen by audition to play in the Ja- Jazz Ensemble under the direction of Mr. Jim Snidero, our trombonist Aiden Doyle, and Vivian Redmond. And again, the concert will be held in November 17th, beginning at 2:00 PM at the Saratoga High School. And then finally, uh, the thunder was a bit stolen from me earlier from our outstanding student speakers. We had a great team who presented to the Board of Regents, as you've heard. Uh, a part of the team, of course, were Sally King, Sophie Vienney, Raven Lacy, and some other students, Carl Little, Lucas Mitchell, Avery Oskavio, and Afton Service. And they did a great job, again, and of course, this is a process that is ongoing, it's a team that's ongoing at our high school, they have some great activities, including the food drives and hats giving, and many other activities that they'll be holding, uh, as part of the program, and then of course, the suicide prevention walk on May 5th, 2019.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Singleton. Uh, next is Superintendent Information, Dr. Wiles.
Okay, thank you. My first item is a reminder that this June, we are going to have a change in the time of our graduation ceremony at SEFQ, uh, SEFQ Arena on the SUNY Albany campus. As you know, we have traditionally had our start time at 4:00 PM and would end about 6:00 or 6:30, um, but the 10:00 AM slot opened up, and we were able to, uh, reach out to SEFQ and secure that going forward. So I know Mr. Piscatelli has communicated with our senior class and their families so they can appropriately plan early, but I just want to, again, remind the community that beginning in June of 2019, we will have graduation beginning at 10:00 AM at the SEFQ Arena. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone there. It'll be here in no time. My next item is early, um, but November 20th is our school-related Professionals Day, and this is the closest board meeting to that time, so we didn't want an opportunity to go past us without taking the time to thank all of those school-related professionals who do so much to make sure our students are served well here in Gilderlin. And by school-related professionals, I mean our bus drivers, our clerical staff, our teaching assistants, nurses, food service staff, aides and monitors, custodians and maintenance staff, who all work side by side each day as partners in our education for our children. So I just want to offer my heartfelt thanks to all of those fine people who make such a difference in every single day here in Gilderlin for our students. So thanks to them. My next item, um, we held our Superintendent's Conference Day last Tuesday on November 6th, and I am not going to give you this full accounting of all the work that was done, but I'll give you the flavor of some of it. Uh, we began, um, with our elementary buildings, as they continue to traditionally do the parent-teacher conferences, so that went on, uh, at all of our elementary buildings. Um, at the middle school, our teachers participated in an activity around the Next Generation Learning Practices and a Guide to Better Conversations that was led by Bev Biznet and Roy Dumare, and they did some additional planning beyond that. In this very room, we welcomed back Nancy Andres and Susan Tangor, who were longtime Gilderlin, um, professionals, who are now with CASDA, and they did a program for all of our office, Placed Professionals. Um, and then we also did some sexual harassment training for them as well. Uh, the training was very well-received, and we were happy to have Susan and Nancy back among us. Our bus drivers also participated in, um, professional development in a workshop, uh, through Albany Med called Stop the Bleeding, which is learning how to respond in a crisis when you need to know those best practices. And then we had a group of aides and monitors and others who participated in, um, NCBI, the National Coalition Building Institute, uh, which is a workshop that helps us become more aware of our biases, so we can be more inclusive and appreciative of those who are different from us. Uh, World Languages and Cultures attended a conference with the Office of Bilingual Education and World Languages, and ENL did tons of work, so, um, and then we had a group working with Jennifer Bichant on collaborative problem solving, and high school worked on standards-based assessments. There were dozens of things going on over the course of the day. Feedback has been very positive, people are appreciative of having professional development that's tailored to their immediate needs. So, uh, kudos to Damian and the professional development team, and the principals, and everyone who played a role in putting together the pieces of that day. Lynn Severance had a role in that as well, so it was a great day.
Lori, excuse me?
Yes, sure.
The elementary, uh, teachers met with parents...
Yes.
For conferences, do they ever get a chance for, for these workshops?
They have their chance in March.
Okay.
So, we talk about that, what do you think, Ms. Dr. Singleton, every year? About how great it would be to be able to use that time?
Yeah.
But scheduling the conferences...
I know absolutely about that, it just seems like it was too bad, because it sounds like it was a great day.
We'll do extra for them in March.
Okay.
I think, as everyone knows, we, we have posted our, um, exit poll summary to the website. This is following our Capital Project, um, Bond referendum from, um, in October, so the results are there. I invite people to go and look. The Communication Service at the Bosse's did a nice job compiling the information and putting it in digestible, um, format where you can get some guidance into how people voted and why people voted the way that they did, and I know that's important information for us as we figure out next steps. And then my last item, uh, as you know, in early October, we began gathering data from our community to inform the budget development process. We're now at the point where we're asking board members to provide some insight to really the district office team and our administrative team about the areas of focus that you have for the budget. We have tried a variety of different approaches in the past to gather your input, so we're gonna try something new this year to keep you on your toes. Um, we're gonna do, um, it's essentially a three-step process. Step 1, you're gonna receive a communication tomorrow where you're gonna be asked to share with us your top areas of focus in the budget, and you can have 4, you can have 5, you can have 10, but these are the things that matter most to you as we plan for 2019, 2020. Uh, those will be due on Monday of next week. We're gonna take that list then and compile all of the ideas... We're going to take that list then and compile all of the ideas from everyone and send out the complete list to everyone. And you will have the opportunity to then rank each one of those ideas. So when we come back together on December 4th, we will have a complete list, but also a ranked list to begin the conversation when we're here in person. And that will be very helpful, I think, to us as we're trying to figure out just where we can put our resources in the year going forward. So look for an email, Damian, will it be coming from you or from?
Send it tonight if you'd like.
Okay, so look for an email from Damian. And.
Will that be on the portal?
No, it'll be a Google Doc.
A Google form.
It'll go right into your email.
Okay.
So you don't even have to go to the portal.
Just for clarification, Marie, so does that mean that if I have 10 items and Barb thinks of 10 items and I, oh, I didn't think of that item that Barb thought of, I could then rank that as my third thing?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
So in that.
Is this a way to collaborate and get other thoughts?
Yes. And if we have duplicates across the nine board members, obviously, we'll collapse the duplicates. And that way, exactly. So if you didn't think of something when you were working independently, you can tag on. We'll see how that one goes. Barbara?
Just have two questions. Can you update us a little bit on the mental health clinic that we're trying to establish? Where that is in the process?
Okay.
And where are we in the process of looking at the bond referendum?
So the first question is the mental health clinic. Last board meeting, the board approved the contract with Northern Rivers. And Northern Rivers is now in the first part of the hiring process. So when they are down to the finalist categories, our staff will be invited to go in and participate in the interviews. We should be getting word very soon, like within the week, that they're ready for us to do that. So once we get the hiring process done, we'll be ready to open. I think realistically, it'll be after the first of the year.
Right.
Yeah. And then the next question about the Capital Project. On Friday morning, the Business Practices Committee met. And I know Neil's and others will be giving this report. And we had a lengthy conversation about what should be the next steps. We had Dan Woodside there, Cliff was there, I was there, Elizabeth Floyd Mailer was there. And we have that conversation, which I think is going to come up a little bit later in the agenda.
Any other questions? All right, so we'll move on to board present information. There are, there's a list of policies to review. I don't know if we have discussed now, if we have questions now. Barb, go ahead.
Let me just go over them. 1,400 public comments, or public complaints, excuse me. Just sort of small revisions there to include Title I requirements that are now required, you know, notifications and stuff. 2265, shared decision-making, we've added students, you know, to the process, which has always been what we've included, but it wasn't in the policy. And we've removed the two-year, you know, requirement that we revise the policy or look at it. So, you know, we'll look at it on an adneed basis. 2340, notice of meetings. We added the video conferencing that we've been doing. And the fact that we want to publish the internet address on our website if we're streaming the meeting. So again, just minor refinements on those. 7510, student and staff memorials is a new policy for our district. And I would just like to make a couple of grammatical things, very simple things. In that first sentence, recognizing that the loss of a member of the school community is deeply felt, comma, I would say the Gilderland Central School District wishes to support staff, students, and families. And then in the third paragraph, you will see a slash, one to the third sentence down, such as inanimate objects, comma, collections of books, I think it should be, or other items will be advised, et cetera. So again, this is a new policy that would sort of give us a policy under, you know, when there's a death in the family, so to speak. So if you guys will take a look at it and let us know if you have any questions, that'd be great.
In particular, if you could look at the exhibit, because that's a newly created tool, if it makes sense, that would be helpful, too.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to action items. First, a school business management action. Neil?
Okay, thank you, Seema. First item this evening is a resolution for the cooperative bidding of water sampling and testing services. And Capital Region BOCES is partnering with Washington, Saratoga, Warren, Hamilton, Essex County BOCES, the Wish We BOCES, to offer school districts the opportunity to join together for the water sampling and testing services that are required. This pertains to lead testing that went into effect a couple of years ago. So in 2020, all school districts have to do a complete retest of all of their water outlets. So this is the first step in that. When we, when the law was signed, when the law was signed in 2016, all school districts in New York State had about seven weeks to complete the testing. So it was up to each school to find a source for somebody to do the sampling and testing. So proactively, this now allows our school district and many other school districts to find the best, most price-competitive opportunity to have this work done. So we're recommending that we be allowed to participate in that process with these two BOCES.
Give a second. Ben? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is six-zero.
Next item is an internship agreement with Clarkson University. And this is for internship and practical experience for students attending Clarkson to have that experience in our school district.
Have a motion? Judy? Teresa, second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I work there. I didn't hear Tim. Did he say anything?
Aye.
Pass is five-zero. Okay.
Next item are service agreements. We have three different service agreements this evening. First is a memorandum of agreement for the IDA flow-through funds, and that's with the New England Center for Children. We also have an agreement with Kimberly Banker-Jefferson to provide speech-language pathology services. And we also have an agreement with Living Resources Corporation to provide interpreting services for the death.
Can we have a motion for the three of them together? Give a motion, Barb? Second? Ben? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is six-zero.
Next is a resolution for the declaration of surplus and obsolete property. And we have a number of items, mostly from the maintenance department and the transportation department. And those have been provided for you.
Have a motion? Ben? Second? Teresa?
Second.
Oh, Tim, second? It's a little delay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass is six-zero.
And then finally, this evening, we have a donation. And that's from Dick's Sporting Goods, who provided bonus certificates totaling $500 for the purchase of physical therapy-related items made possible through the efforts of Mr. and Mrs. Michael McCollum.
Can I have a motion? Judy? Second? Teresa? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass is six-zero. Thank you very much for the donation. Moving on to superintendent action, Dr. Wiles.
I just have one item this evening. This is a request for our students to participate in the gap program. And it's an added ninth grade. We, when we originally approved this, it was for grade levels 10 through 12. But we now have a ninth grader who wants to go, so we're remending the request to capture that. So that's what you see before you this evening.
Can I have a motion? Barb? Second? Judy? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is six-zero. Okay. Moving on to board present action. We have a list of policies here. We have to do them separately, right?
Aye.
No.
No, we can do them all together?
Yeah.
Okay. So can I have a motion? Judy? Second? Teresa? Any questions? I know we've had some of these for a while. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass is six-zero. Okay, moving on to board committee reports. So many people are missing. I'm trying to figure out where to start. You want to start, Barb, with policy?
Very simple. You have the policies that we worked on earlier in the meeting, so we have another meeting coming up.
Thank you. What about communications?
We have a meeting coming up on Monday at 8:00 AM in the district office. We haven't met since the last board meeting when we updated you, so.
Didn't we meet more recently than the board meeting? It doesn't matter.
No, because I remember Sean talking about the sharing, the idea-sharing program, so.
Audit?
Nothing as of yet, and the works for an amazing.
That's good. And business practices? I know, Neil, you're going to.
I'm going to take over for that one.
Thank you.
First of all, we had the election of the chair, and Gloria Tall Hilt was appointed as committee chair for the coming school year. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here this evening, so that's why I'm pin-shitting for her at this point. We did discuss the Capital Project referendum. As Maria alluded to earlier, with us was Dan Woodside. He's the executive principal with CS Arch, which is the district's architectural firm. And Dan began the discussion of the defeated October 16th bond referendum, sharing his perspective and experience with unsuccessful Capital Project referendum votes. In Dan's experience, defeats of Capital Project votes are rare. In his opinion, Gilderland's project is pretty basic. Referendum consisted of needed work, needed infrastructure work with a layering in of program improvements. Dan's firm is working with many other school districts on redesigning classroom space and learning environments to meet the needs of 21st century learners. He recommends taking time to review the referendum, exit poll feedback, and analyze the responses before moving forward. The project may need to be scaled back with a focus on the most critical needs, although he questioned that all of the work is still important. Dan also recommended that, when considering a revote, go out in May when voter attention is already high due to the regular budget vote. In discussing a May vote, Dan noted that it will delay the bulk of the construction by a year and will also add cost. He noted that voter referendums held in the fall yield the best opportunity between the lowest prices for construction. Once the voters approve a referendum, it will take five to seven months to design a project and another seven to nine months to receive approval from the New York State Education Department. That timeline places bidding of the project in the January to March timeframe, when contractors aren't yet committed for summer work and are able to offer the most competitive pricing. A May vote will cause the district to be in a less favorable bid cycle. It will fall beyond the summer construction window necessary for school projects. This will create a delay until the following summer, which will add another year of price escalation and uncertainty that must be factored into the cost estimate for the work. A recommended option for the May vote, should it be successful, is to package a subset of the work consisting of the most urgent and critical health and safety items for state approval under an expedited approval process. This approach offers the advantage of permitting that work to be performed in 2020, our original target date, and avoid the increased escalation cost. The district would have to pay for an expedited third-party review, but it would be cost-beneficial under these circumstances for items of the most critical and urgent need. The remainder of the project scope would go through the normal review cycle, but would add another year delaying the start of construction until 2021. After discussion, the committee sports a May vote rather than selecting another date. Gloria asked about the feedback from the referendum vote survey, and those results have been posted to the district website. The committee also favored a prioritization of the elements in the defeated bond referendum and upon the support of the Board of Education at its November 13th meeting. Cliff Noonie is prepared to begin working with the district's architectural and construction management firms to reassess the project scope for a scaled-down version of the proposed project. The components of the October bond referendum would be broken down into three levels of priority from most critical to least critical when compared to each other. When that process is complete, the redefined project will be brought back to the committee for their review. The committee also discussed ways to engage and receive feedback from the community during the process. And the board's communication committee is exploring the use of a protocol called Thought Exchange that could be helpful for this process. Also discussed was radon mitigation. Cliff Noonie provided a brief history on the district's testing for radon. The district's been proactive in testing for radon as radon testing is not required. Testing of all school buildings in 2008 found that a limited number of spaces in the high school contained levels of radon exceeding the recommended action level. As a result, the district engaged the services of outside consultants to design and implement radon remediation measures. Those measures were designed and subsequently installed in 2010 and have been functioning since that time. During discussions with the Teacher Association Building Health and Safety Representative, it was decided to retest again this spring, since several years have passed. Some areas where radon mitigation systems were in place tested above the action level again. This could be caused by shifts in the earth or changes within the building. The district is working with an environmental engineering firm to develop a plan to remediate the areas that tested above the recommended levels.
Thank you, Neil. Any questions, Barb?
Yes, there, so what I think I'm hearing is that there's no possibility that we could pull out the most critical items and get them to a vote sometime this fall or early next year, so we could get into that positive budget cycle?
What we're talking about is this May. So when I refer to May, the upcoming May, 2019.
I'm referring to January, February, so we can, potentially, there's no chance of that happening?
Well, the committee didn't feel that there was enough time to do the work that was necessary to reevaluate that and get it out into a vote. There's work that has to be done to do that. Also, I think we would run the same risk of criticism that we're voting off-cycle again. So the approach with May is that we could have a proposition to put on a referendum to put before the voters, but we could also do this expedited review of some of the most critical work and still keep that on track and then follow up with a regular process for the remainder of the project.
Now, since the last meeting, have you had a chance to talk to the bond council? That we could be more definitive in, say, breaking up the project into like the three elements or two elements or whatever, rather than just, you know, a blank sum of X number of million dollars?
Well, what we need to get is the board to be in the same position as the committee in terms of the recommendation to move forward. So none of that work has been done yet. We're really looking for agreement on part of the board that that's the direction the entire board would like to move.
One more question?
Sure.
Basically, to get into the nuts and bolts of the criticism, I forget, Mr., is it Chick?
Civrally?
Civrally or whatever, whatever. You know, he brought up some sort of clarification points. In other words, is the architect able to give us, say, what these cameras cost for another school district that did it? In other words, so there's something concrete. What I'm hearing him saying is that it just seems so ephemeral, you know? $300,000 for X number of cameras. Is there a price list? Or, I know we're two years out, so there's going to be increases and all that, but just to give a more concrete meat sort of to the bones of the project?
Yes, we have those estimates in the, and they are not precise estimates. They're rough estimates because nothing has been designed yet. And this is always the difficulty with school construction work, is without voter approval, how much money do we want to spend in upfront time, money, and energy to hone in on all these costs when, in fact, the referendum may or may not get approved? So if it doesn't get approved, we could spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of architectural times and time and fees detailing to a great degree the project. Again, there's always the risk that it never comes to fruition because it gets defeated. So that's what schools always wrestle with. How much money do we want to put upfront before we go to the voters? And typically, the decision is we can't, we don't want to invest a lot of time and money upfront to analyze things to that degree without knowing for sure that we're going to have the voters approve the overall referendum. So that's why you end up with these rough estimates, then we get voter approval, now we have funds, and then we hire the architect to come in and actually do the actual design, which is looking into every space and going in great detail into buildings and systems and looking where we have to run pipes and electrical wires and all of those sorts of things. But that would take a lot of time and effort and cost upfront that may never be realized.
The other argument. The other argument that was shared was that, you know, if there's money left over, then it just goes into the pot. My recollection, on prior bond issues, when we had some extra money, we didn't bond that amount of money.
Correct.
So, that in a sense, it didn't go into the pot. It just never was pulled out of the pot.
Yes. So, we would borrow for what we needed. You remember from the resolution approving the capital project, it does state that if there, if we spend less, the board has the right, and it was, would be up to the board and the board's approval, to go back and look at some of the other items that were on the list, and if it fit within the dollars available to pursue that work. But that's a board decision down the road. But initially, we have the projects defined, and if it comes in less, then we can borrow less. It's only if the board says we do have additional money remaining, and there's projects that were approved as, or reviewed as part of the overall capital project's scope, that the board can go back and say, with the additional money, we want to pursue these particular projects.
Thank you so much. Other questions?
I was just, I think that we should have reports on the Visioning Committee, too, since it's another committee that the board has right now, so.
Want to finish up the business practices first? Just want to make sure there's nobody else that have questions.
Oh, I thought that we had moved on. Okay.
Anybody else have questions?
Again, we're just looking for, I know the committee was looking for some sort of agreement that we're moving in the right direction to look at a May vote and to look at reassessing the project and then bringing that back to the Business Practices Committee.
Yeah, so me, Theresa, me and Teresa were on there, Christine and Gloria, the other two, so they're both not here. But we all had the discussion about, I guess, timing, and kind of what we agreed with what Neil had just said about going with the May vote because of being off-cycle, and we already lost that opportunity in October to be, you know, ahead of the game. I just feel like having it in January, there's a potential to have another problem again about having, you know, a secret vote. And I know it wasn't secret, but.
It wasn't at all. Absolutely not.
So, that's what we talked about, and I think we have to bring it back to the rest of the board to see if everyone's in agreement.
I guess my fear is that if you wait until May, you're, first of all, trying to do your budget, and then you're going to be doing this other thing. Whereas, if you were to take a small portion of your most critical items, I think Kim mentioned the percentages of people that were really concerned about the safety and health aspects, you know, of the building. Just carve out that 10 million or 11 million or whatever it is and put it up for an okay this fall or December, January, whatever. You're still going to be two steps ahead of the game. And you put that thing up and you're going to be mixing up the budget vote with, you know, these structural priorities. To me, I just don't see a lot of benefit to that. But I'm one member.
Well, but also, Barb, remember, one of the frequent comments that we heard, or I heard, I'm sure it was we, was that we were just trying to sneak it by and have it at a different time, you know, either. I know, I don't agree with that. I think we did everything we could, but some people felt that this was just trying to get it when people wouldn't be able to vote. And certainly, the population that leaves the area for warmer weather, lucky people, would feel that way.
They're absentee ballots.
I don't agree with that, Barbara, but I'm just saying, I think that's one of the big concerns, and that if we're respecting what the community wants, then we'll try it this way. I would far rather have it now. I would have rather had it passed in October, as would you, yeah. But I think we have to respect that part of the community, too, like it or not.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Sure.
I think that that is correct, that, you know, one of the big criticisms was this whole idea of sneaking it by, and whether you agree or disagree with that, if you have this vote in May, that takes that right off the table. That just becomes a nonstarter. So, you know, by moving it to May, you have to drawback, you lose time as far as the process and the construction. But you at least show the voters, hey, we listen to you. And again, whether you agree or disagree with that term "sneaking," it takes it off the table, and that would be important when you take a second bite at the apple on this vote.
And Neil and Cliff, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We talked about when we have the bond vote in May, part of that, I guess, the more necessary work that needs to be done, you know, quicker, could be like an expedited route to state ed. So, we'd have approval from them earlier than the other work. Is that correct?
And sort of tried to reference, I know it's hard to follow in terms of the dialogue, but that's what Dan Woodside talked about, is carving out the most critical needs and doing this expedited review process. So, we wouldn't go through the normal channels with the State Education Department, which is a lengthy, set-seven to nine-month process right now. But the state adopted this system within the last year or so, where school districts can opt out of using the state of New York, and there's other firms that have been designated that will do what they call third-party reviews. It costs the districts some money to do that, to bypass state ed and go through that process, but it's a much quicker process than sitting in the queue with the State Education Department. So, Dan's suggestion was, you know, you benefit in the long run, maybe not in the short term, because we'll have to pay for it, but in terms of long-term, in terms of getting that process, that project accelerated and the work underway, meeting those critical needs, particularly around health and safety that are most urgent and critical for our school district.
I guess I agree with that, but again, that's going to even cost the taxpayer more money, because we have to pay for that additional review, so.
Well, the other thing to remember, though, is that we extend the project out, which is you also get other cost factors that have to be added in, because we're now extending the timeframe.
It's going to be more expensive.
So, we're shortening the timeframe, but we're paying for the expedited review.
Excuse me. Who does the expedited re, how do you?
Basically, they're architectural and engineering firms that have committed to this process with the state.
Okay.
So, the state has designated certain firms to do that, and those are firms that work in schools. So, they're familiar with the State Education Department requirements. They have to abide by them when they develop plans and specifications, but they put a system in place to certify certain firms throughout the state to be able to do these expedited reviews on their behalf. And it's a recognition of the backlog at the State Education Department. It's really what it is.
Yeah.
Projects sit for so long that the state decided.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
They needed another way to address that and went and created this other option. But we're going outside of the state now, so that's why districts have to pay if they want to go that route, because.
It's like Fastpass at Disney World. You pay more to go in the faster lane. I know, I'm thinking, maybe that would be worth it sometimes, but I don't think we want to pay more. No, I mean, if it passed in October, then we wouldn't. But it's kind of like, if we don't do that, and we risk, you know, run the risk of doing January and then having that problem again, so.
I think it's good if there's that opportunity. There are things that are urgent.
Very ironic. Passing the budget and, or passing the referendum in October is now going to cost us not much more in the end, the things that we need.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Business Practices? Ben, you wanted to bring up the Ad-Hoc Committee for the vision meeting?
Yeah, I just thought that we could report on that, too, while we were doing committee reports. I don't know if Marie wants to say something.
I can help you write what I sent you on Friday. How's that? So, the Ad-Hoc Visioning Committee, we had our first meeting on Thursday of last week. Members of the committee include Seema, Gloria, Ben, and Judy. The purpose of the meeting was to brainstorm some ideas about a process for getting discussion about the future of Gilderland schools underway, beginning with the Board of Education. The group determined it would be helpful for the board and the district office team to have a quote-unquote "spark of inspiration" that might include the viewing of a film that focuses on schools of the future, or the materials available from the NISBA Conference Vision 2030. The committee will screen some materials and then come forward with some ideas for the entire board. And I think on Friday, I sent out a few video clips and some other sparking kinds of materials to get the ball rolling. So, I don't know if you want to add anything, Ben, or Seema, or Judy?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to keep that on everyone's minds as we move forward.
So, it's the Ad-Hoc Committee that's going to figure out the process of how we're going to work on the vision. So, I think if you're not on the committee and you have input and you want to share something, that you should probably do that. Next, we have public comment number two. Lynn, did anybody else sign up? No? Okay. Then I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a matter relating to the employment history and potential discipline of a particular employee. And the location of the meeting will be the Principal's Conference Room. The public's welcome to wait outside the room if they wish to. Just a reminder, there'll be no public actions following executive session. I need a motion. Ben? Teresa, second. Lift a vote. Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It passes six-zero. Thank you.
Should I follow me in the meeting, or should I just? I think you can just, everyone's. You're a regular.
You're a regular.